I figured you'd cut quite a bit after. Overtime takes that down to ten thousand and fifteen. Total fifteen thousand. Taking it back to ten thousand. I figure two years ago, we didn't have it at all, so.
We're gonna keep that comp time down.
He's pretty good at that.
If you don't have the money to pay the salary.
Then we'll run back to same deal.
We'll make work.
Alright, what else?
I see what you do.
Five year, we've done a good job of getting on five years switched out and stuff, so we're gonna be good for a few years.
Okay.
So, back that from the eleven thousand, cut five thousand out of that.
So down to six.
Yeah.
Down to one thirty. Six.
Cut down to six.
Oh, cut it down to six.
Cut down to two six.
Two six.
Five thousand.
That's five thousand.
And then five thousand with the overtime.
Can you make the notes for Devon?
Um, yeah, right here.
Out of, out of station maintenance, I'm thinking category, take two thousand out of that.
Bring it to eighteen.
Eighteen, because one of the things I was looking at was I had another air conditioning unit that would need to be changed out, but Mother Nature is trying to take care of that for me. So insurance is actually replacing that unit, so. Misaline use repairs is where we take a lot of our vehicle maintenance out of. I'm gonna cut that back, uh, three thousand dollars.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
What'd you say, Jamie?
It's another three thousand.
Oh.
So that's twenty-five thousand total.
Twenty-five thousand takes a thousand by the person who has the issue right now. I will just make a statement. I have a thirty-two-year-old fire truck, I have a twenty-year-old fire truck, and I have about a five-year-old fire truck. And it is, is beginning to hit us, so.
We're going to township.
You have any fire?
Township, as far as apparatus fires.
Fire trucks are all in good shape.
They're very, very indecent shape, of course, apparently not raining as much as what city trucks. Uh, but again, we have cumin fire fund for replacement, so I mean, I'm probably even next year then be coming through and saying, hey, we need to start looking at replacing the thirty-two-year-old fire truck.
Which?
Which tanker?
No, that's no.
That's correct.
So, uh, in that, we do a lot of the repairs ourselves. We did just add a third mechanic, so we're getting a lot more stuff done. We're doing it in-house, saving some money. Once again, we do have cumin fire, if we have something large that has to be repaired. We can, uh, we tried not to pull out of that, but we're in a different world right now, so.
Alright, what's next? Misaline use repairs.
Okay, hazmat, or the rescue and hazmat, take that back to five thousand. That's down to four two four.
Two forty-two.
Yeah, two forty-two.
Okay, take it down to what?
Take it down to five thousand.
No, you already reduced that to ten.
Right. We have a fund and we've actually began now aggressively, as we do hazmat incidents. We did two of them last month, we're aggressively billing on those now. So, so those, when those funds come in, they go into a hazmat fund that we have set up. And if we, if we have expenditures for hazmat, we'll pull out of that fund, so. Training at seventeen thousand, cut that back to two thousand, fifteen thousand. Now, um, three twenty-three. Take that back to five thousand, so cut down to thousand. That'll be about where we're at this year. What we were anticipating, uh, we have what's called the rebanding coming down, but we've been able to work with the shooting partners. And we've basically been able to provide the equipment we need to do that, so we don't have to pay anybody. Actually found out reband, that's actually narrow. We, we, we're programming already, but we've, we're gonna be able to do that ourselves. So, uh, we'll be able to cut some of that out. Here's the other thing, if, as the year goes by, if I can come up with the funds and tell me if this is a good idea. I have one last payment on my vehicles.
That's for the, you mean this year, if you have the funds?
Twelve, in twelve, I have one payment left, that's the last payment. Uh, if I have, if I can find funds this year to make that payment, then I won't leave the seventy.
Seventy-seven hundred.
Seventy-seven hundred.
Yeah, seventy-seven hundred next year, so.
Okay.
I guess I'm not necessarily saying cut it out at this point, but if we can find those funds, then we don't have to. We don't have to have the funds next year to make that payment.
Okay.
So that's two, five, ten, twelve, thirteen.
Thirty-three thousand. We got one, we got one. Yeah, the twenty-two thousand, hold on, he cut five thousand from, was it hazmat? Ten and then ten, right, five, there's ten. There's two.
Here's.
Twenty-three.
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 There's two.
Twenty-three.
Okay, hold on, I went, okay, I added my ten twice, so it's twenty-three.
We're not judging.
That's alright, no, it's good.
But okay, thank you, Scott.
I got a question real quick too, about, you know, how, how often do we make several calls, like first one calls in the same, same place?
We're looking to change that.
We're looking, we, we've talked about putting an ordinance in place, which we have a fund after so many.
That's why I was saying, I mean, I know the city of Philadelphia has, if you get two free calls in a twelve-month period, not an annual year, in a twelve-month period. So if you have three calls in a year period, they go back and they charge you seventy-five dollars per run. You know, Nathan, they've got it marked on the run sheet, so you get seventy-five dollars for, it's free the first two. If you have a third one, you have to pay for all three.
Columbus on police and fire, there's certain things on the police, but you get one free every year. Everything after that different ones. That way people are more apt to keep their doors locked, you know, when they're calling.
They train their personnel on how to disarm the alarm panel, so you're not running out of everything that comes to work. New mains on their, on their equipment, you know, clean their smoke detectors, uh, service their equipment.
That might be a way to generate some.
Uh, we had, what, fifty-something at one company here in town with police.
Well, by a little alarm.
Fifty in one period.
Okay, alright, we're finished with you. Why don't we consider your own money?
We get a free.
But thank you, Scott. Okay, sanitation.
Well.
Or back to Stacy.
Stacy.
Okay.
Did Devon?
Stacy, come sit out there with us.
You can, um, and let me tell you, I'll stop just cut out twenty-three thousand. Okay. The numbers are here, the numbers are here. Okay, okay. I only came up with, um, just in case she needs to move money into overtime, we both feel safe with cutting thirty-five thousand over there.
Thirty-five, so thirty-five plus the twenty-three.
No, it'll, it'll, that won't be on her sheet here, this is gonna be out with the twenty and a lot of.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, and that leaves her son to move into, um, overtime if we would need to.
And keep in mind, we've, we've struggled to keep the union comp down, because that costs us more and longer. Trying to keep that long comp.
She said thirty-five, you're putting some of that in overtime.
If we needed it, I'm trying to think how much was kept in there, it was under, it was under ten though. Eighty-seven, eight, so we found your time in this year. This year was like, after the.
I'd like to say back to funding, man, can we figure out how much salary I've got left in it, because I've got salaries, well, I'm just saying, if, if we can get where we need to be, by cutting out of this year's budget. I got about crack was deployed, I had a couple of months of this out, when he was on military leave. And we've got, we've got time right now from, you know, from where, like Doug, leaving with twenty years of longevity, and new guy coming on with no longevity, so that would be roughly sixty-six hundred dollars right there.
One guy too much, about five grand, right?
So, I mean, if, 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 if we're that close to things, you know, that close, I mean, I'm thinking, can we?
That right there?
Hate to have another meeting, but I think we can probably, pretty close to be where, or we may not have to, if we can be where we can be.
But is there, is there anything else we can reduce, you know, is there a chance we'll back into the salary?
Well, I think until we get this figured.
Let me, let me check Scott's.
Yeah, I'd say at least a short one, because we need to be sure of what her figures, I mean, we're putting everybody.
You can sit at the table, but if there's nothing to cut, there's nothing to cut.
Starting off with this, I don't think that's fair.
No, it's not, but, but please understand, what I did this is trying to save as much as we could on the salary.
Alright, okay, so let's go on and look at sanitation, and go through the others, because we shouldn't just stop at a couple of them, no?
The other side of this though too, is, is reaching that number, is sixty thousand on as a police officer. In my mind, I'd, I'd like not to cut the budget, but if we have to cut it to make the budget work, then we gotta cut it. I need to take that out.
I don't think we're gonna have to, right now, wouldn't I, talking about cut the police officer and.
Oh, that's sixty thousand included in that.
That's, yeah.
That was included in.
That was the part of one hundred thirty-five.
Yeah, that was part of one hundred thirty-five.
Yeah, that was included.
So, so we're not cutting it from the manpower list, we're just, right now, if there's time, cutting out.
My suggestion is, my suggestion is we leave it in their period, and then earmark it, if we don't get the money, then we don't fill acquisition.
For that year.
Right, and then that way it's never, so instead of going in three hundred thousand back, to go three hundred sixty thousand back, knowing that if we have to cut acquisition, we don't fill acquisition, we don't get the money. That would be my suggestion.
And sanitation.
Mark, do you have any ideas for what's there?
I have a great one, there's a chart with.
Okay.
And for what we, what you've got relative to what I have?
This is so loud, and this was the proposed, then after we made cuts, this is the revised.
So you've already got the only. I just don't have very many lineups in the whole thing. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, I think the only one we cut was the truck payment.
Twenty-seven five, seventeen four.
So seventeen.
Right.
That's the only thing that we cut.
Right, and we do have a good number on that, because we took, uh, bids. Last month, it came out at thirty-four, the two things that aren't on are the plow and the salt spreader.
Now, I was talking about this truck payment there.
Right, that's what I mean, we, we know what trucks are costing out, uh, the plow is around forty-six, and the salt spreader is around forty-two, so the number's pretty good. If we use what's in this year's budget that has been spent year-to-date, I've got thirty-seven. We can probably cut that truck payment from seventeen to about ten.
So then that is just ten thousand.
But right now, I've got twenty-seven five in this year's budget. I've got flatbed truck payment, it doesn't exist for ten. That makes a total of thirty-seven seven seventy-five. So by the time we get the other truck, and we get the accessories on, and we can probably do that for about ten thousand dollars. The law will need for the truck payment for next year.
More fortunately pickup coming in at.
Thirty-four. I don't think that worked, I took a couple more things off of these enough, we awarded it.
It had like thirty-four, four, fifty?
Yeah, I think we got it down to like thirty-three, eight something. The one thing he couldn't put on was the lighting, we have to do that aftermarket. Steps have to go on aftermarket, and then the, the salt spreader and the snowplow have to become attached. So I think we can.
Does one on the.
No, the snowplow package was on the truck, but not the plow itself, and not the salt spreader, to do all the rest, thank the rental owners, but not to get something. Another connection, not a lot on that much, I checked, I know I raised my equipment repairs, I have mine through eight months of payments. Which means I should have about thirty-three percent of my budget left, right now I have twenty-eight point eight-six, so my repairs are running more than the number last year.
And that's the problem with cost of repairs.
No, that's because I'm looking, we're running equipment twenty-five years old. I mean, we've got a lot of old equipment, we don't have, we don't turn trucks every four, five years, and things like that, we run old junk equipment, so we have a lot more repairs.
Well, most of everything in your twenty-twelve budget is.
There's no equipment in mine.
Pretty much the same as you had this year, you have an increased.
Hardly anything. Oil went up because of price oil, uh, fuel were really close on, uh, repairs went up slightly. And if you'll notice, for next year, there's nothing for any equipment, there's not a single thing in there for equipment.
You left the budget same as gas, and you got one, there's no vehicle.
Yeah, we'll be okay on that, I think we can make that on that. But I mean, I didn't have anything in there except for the cart tipper, which we'd like to put on the back, we have a garbage truck.
I think we need to put some, we're, you know, one back injury is gonna.
I agree.
Would take three, four.
I think you should have a boat trucks.
So we got another new one?
The new truck already has.
Oh, it has, then.
When we ordered the new compactor, we put one on the back, so we don't have one on the other truck. So we're gonna be putting one on our system, it just seems like people are getting carried away with that great big tipper car all the time.
Okay.
So that's seven thousand.
Seven thousand, okay, now that's, alright, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Seventy-three, seven thousand forty thousand. Okay.
Point three.
Seventy-three thousand.
You were pulling off Jamie's figures last time.
I wrote, I wrote my ten down, then I went back, I wrote it down again, so I haven't.
It's almost ten four.
Okay, easy, Alice, let's, let's move on here.
That wasn't the clock, you showed up by there all.
It's, you'd be showing up at almost.
And we've, we already went through there.
That's that one.
She already had a real in budget.
Why, why is the assistant doubled?
Is that the one where we went from, we paid a third, a third, a third, to now we have four?
Okay, so now.
And all of Linda's.
We pay all of them, that's why it doubled, okay.
And then there's you guys in the practitioner office, and there's Phil and the secretary to us, the assistant as well.
By rights, we should be paying all the others.
She doesn't do anything for Gary in there?
Uh, yeah, yeah, Gary, yeah.
That's true.
And Gary's being paid by the utility as well, so why wouldn't we do half, half?
By rights, we should be paying.
So Kathy, that does, that's, that's, Ellen, that person, this is, Linda helps everybody, you know, Linda's the only occasion to come to the personal office. Rarely, but. Especially red old checks.
I'm not being here.
I know one's gone, but one doesn't show anything else, but there's two on there.
I don't have any idea, I didn't have anything to do with her budget.
I have an idea from, from all the facts here, the one copy machine is the one that they have on these, and so is the other one, the, uh, larger copier, that's also at least.
No, he's talking about the four forty.
Three forty.
Three forty and.
Three forty-one.
No, four forty.
Four forty.
Yeah, three forty-one and four forty.
No, three forty, three forty and four forty.
There's two, two line items of copying machine.
Okay, there's nothing down for them, on the three forty.
Right, I was just, I was just asking.
Yeah, I don't understand either, but at least you're going to one item.
Are they buying a new one?
It's the same, it's the same cost, so I'm guessing they just put it in a different line item number, it's the lea, same leasing.
Well, no, when you go to four forty, that's, that's purchasing of a new asset.
Now, I thought that's what they were doing.
I thought they were leasing it.
Well, that's this one up here.
Weren't they leasing it for, uh, four years or something?
Well, that's, that's this one, that's this one, so I don't know.
She's saying four forty means that you purchased. Right, I'm guessing they got that in the wrong line number then.
I don't, like I said, I don't know.
I thought they said the last time.
They did into their budget.
Yeah.
I'll have the information when we have a next meeting.
I thought they said they were buying the, I think that's what I thought they said. Yeah, they were buying the.
I'll check.
Okay.
Out of this year's budget, we're cutting ten thousand out of overtime.
See, I told you it was thirty-three, there you go.
Out of the fire department?
Out of the fire department overtime, which leaves me another, which leaves me.
Wait, Manny.
Eleven budget.
Seven.
You're cutting what?
Ten thousand out of overtime.
So that gives you fifteen for this year.
I've already expended out some, but it leaves me roughly ten left, yeah, leaves me for this year fifteen. Uh, and then on salaries, there was, I forgot that, forty-three hundred dollars or something like that.
God, I don't.
You can take that other ten, like thirty-three number.
The other thirty was up and worth two hundred and some thousand dollars.
Well, that's my account, seven thousand. Yeah, well, yeah, so she had it down. Does she know we've got seven off the month?
Just now, how did she know that?
Why you know?
Oh, he went down.
Okay, so when we look at our next meeting.
Well, I think twenty-six, just when, are you for what you're doing on salaries? No, see, I didn't really.
Salaries is, what we, second day, we recommended five hundred dollars for, for exempt, and two hundred dollars for worker employees, along with their one percent of their, their longevity. So it's gonna give everybody about the same.
We, but, understand, because salaries are a range, so you're talking about, if you're saying five hundred, you need to make sure that that top range isn't more than five hundred.
And I'll voice my opinion once again, when we have hourly people that are on occasion making more than the salary person does, and working similar hours. I think that the hourly, in some situations, are getting, making the range too close in our own salary.
What is the average of our hourly employees? I mean, I know, what's the base pay for a firefighter, one of those doesn't make it right now, right, thirty-three, thirty-four?
Right, I'm thirty-three.
Six, and what's base pay for police?
Thirty-three cents.
Yeah, thirty-three.
So it's about twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Thirty-three cents.
Twenty-four. That's a big difference from the.
Yeah, because if we do five hundred, that, as far as, uh, the, uh, police chief, it would still, it would go fifty-one, two fifty, so we're still, city engineer would be eighty-six five, so there's still, basically, utilities would be the only one that's, and the, of course, we don't have the assistant. Building commissioner and the utilities would be in the fourth.
And that's still.
They're still up there.
Thirteen thousand more than you.
Okay, we don't have, if we meet twenty-six.
We have some exempt employees making almost as much as you, if not both. Pretty close.
There's a few, the hourly people's very close.
And is that because of overtime?
Okay, so, we can't figure that, because that's not something that they could have and not have, is the twenty-sixth?
Do, do we need another meeting?
Well, you have to pass.
Yes.
You gotta pass.
Yes, yes.
Oh, before the next?
Before the, uh, thirty, before next regular meeting, so I'm looking at.
Don't worry, you could, I'm off the twenty-sixth, so.
It's a Monday.
Next Monday.
You're.
You could meet at six o'clock, pass what you're gonna pass, and you're done.
Of course, it's Sunday.
With the salaries.
Okay, because they only have to have the salaries passed.
And if you know, if this, this is good for the budget, you won't have to meet until it's a budget, until it's time to pass the final passage.
That gives Devon time to make sure figures are all accurate.
Well, what number were you trying to get to, to, was it two hundred thousand?
Two hundred thousand.
Okay. From when we sat down today, I've got two thousand and eleven's budget, hold on, or hold off on the office, would create about sixty thousand cuts. Animal control ten, police cell fifteen hundred, police salaries thirty-five thousand, fire salaries forty-five hundred, fire OT ten thousand. Then out of two thousand and twelve, engineer forty-two thousand, forty-one dollars total, border works ten thousand, police records card eleven thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars. All the fire cuts, when I was out of the room, was twenty-three thousand, and sanitation cuts is seven thousand, rates is two hundred and fourteen thousand, six ninety-six. That leaves, that's still leaving in, um, the original salary request, I haven't done anything with those, so just keep that in mind.
That's what.
And that's all.
I'd rather go with what?
Not including the salary.
No, that, that whole fifty thousand we talked about, that does not, that's not, could have been a two fourteen.
But I mean, I'd rather go with what you proposed, Bill, keep the office.
Well, that's still in there, that's, that's still in there.
It's still in there.
I didn't, twenty twelve.
No, you said that sixty thousand.
That's for this year.
Eleven.
Oh.
Eleven.
Twenty twelve is still in there.
Oh, the twenty twelve is still in there, oh, okay.
Or she.
Okay, yeah, you're right, alright, alright.
We can kind of go.
Well, I thought, we saved sixty thousand this year, I thought you wanted to say thirty-five.
Yeah, I thought that.
You said we wanted to say thirty-five.
I thought it was thirty-five.
Yeah, I think this is why we need to.
Okay, let me look these over then, because I've got.
We gotta look at this and.
I'd rather, I think that's gonna be, oh, we figured, I'd rather take the payout.
But the engineer, we went back from, uh, half and half.
Okay, so maybe.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's, that helped there.
Figure the rate and keep the office.
So you want me to figure?
Hey, there's the door, that's what I tell people, if you don't like, I mean, there's plenty others, and there's the door.
Figure the two hundred straight across, the two hundred straight.
Right there, that's right, you don't have it, you don't matter.
Five hundred for, five hundred for ten, and two hundred for, uh.
When you look around at what other cities are paying that are much bigger than we are, um.
I don't know, Warsburg, that's paying a crash guy sixteen.
Well, look at where they get their money. And we were just happy that, that they said, hey, you have to share some of this.
You want to set your money back.
Do what?
It's not gonna take too long.
I'd rather do six, if, if it's gonna be that big a difference.
What's, what's the easiest for you guys to get back in?
I, I.
For work.
I get in town by four, four thirty.
Earl likes six. Earl likes six.
Earl may have a problem remembering five.
I can only tell time if it's in a straight line, so it's only six, nine.
Well, if it's, if it's five o'clock, it's easier for, for them, rather than having to come back at six, if she doesn't have another, I'll probably be here, and she'll be here, so.
The one more line is for ladies, Mayor Sore, where do you stand on that? Finalize that one.
Well, we're not finalizing any of it, really, we're, we're just talking about, that, uh, well, I think in line with everything else, I think two thousand is too much, for the rest of the thing, as far as the race.
Now, keep in mind, Mayor Sore hasn't been getting a raise now for two years.
I know, I know, but a lot of other people don't have jobs serious.
We're not gonna be here next year, but something needs to be done about the council's thing, and I'm, and I'm just gonna leave it at that, because I think five thousand, it's been five thousand for the last three years, and it was four thousand for quite a few years, and there's a lot of, in the last two or three years, we've had a lot of work problems, and we've had a lot of dopamine, so. I think somewhere down the line, that needs to.
It needs to be raised, so, and, and we was told to put in five hundred dollar raise for you guys last year, which we did.
Now, this is my fault, I don't take cell phones that much as well, I don't, I don't, I don't charge mileage, all the mileage that I use my car on, I don't, I don't lock them, because I, when I go on a burn in us, pump us, you know, I may or may not charge its quarter, but I take mileage down the lead. But whatever you guys decide, uh, is my, you don't pay anything, any increase.
Where are we in, uh, comparison with other, say, your backfields, or your water, or?
It's all over twice.
It's all over.
They should get paid more than you.
So he's the mayor, he's like seventeen years.
Their mayor's considered part-time.
No, he's full.
No, he's full-time.
I think part of that goes back to they don't have a full staff, like, like.
Right.
They have a full-time mayor.
Yeah, I know, but I think that's where some of those.
They do what they do.
That's where some of those monies come from, where they pay some, their, their wages are really high, and I think that's what, where a lot of that comes from, is because they don't have a full staff, part, they're mostly all volunteer.
I'd say.
A lot of are that way.
In light of what we're doing with everybody else, I'd say a thousand would be enough, half of it anyway, for now, but that's my, one out of all of you guys.
And we never have this pay, two pay half.
You know, guys, I'm okay with where it's at.
I think with everybody else, that I, I think thousands tops, that the rest of it is, what's your one? Which would be five hundred of the most.
Where, where's the lunch break? Well, if you do the fifty.
Right at two hundred, right?
You're low.
Without cutting the office.
It basically is gonna be one or the other, it sounds like.
So I'd rather do the fifty.
Six o'clock on the twenty-sixth.
But, but guys, please think about this, ladies and gentlemen, I don't think anyone is probably getting paid enough, we've all worked, but on our salary people, it's getting so close in a lot of cases, that the hourly people are making as much or more than the salary people, I don't think that's proper. You know, I hate to tell them, boy, if you don't like it, move on down the road, because they are the people that we depend on.
And you know, Gary, I agree with that, but I know where I work, the same thing happens, you've got these people that, that work seventy hours a week, so many people, I know.
But in most cases, we've got the hourly salary people doing the same things as other people, working the same amount of hours. That's my problem, if they just wanna work forty, forty-five hours, stay home, let nature take its course, fine, they don't need a raise, but if they're gonna stand up, work hour for hour with the hourly people, it's not fair. I don't say they're not fair, it's not fair.
If, if the base salary was talking one thirty, thirty-five thousand, they thirty-five thousand, they're making the same as the salary person, obviously, they're working a lot more than some.
And it happens on, you know, year to year, every other year, something.
Because they won't always do that.
You know, tornado hit. Oops, see y'all next meeting.
Six o'clock, three o'clock.